I'd like to take this moment to acknowledge the life of Anya Lambert, who passed away. She was a member of the Human Rights Commission and a great activist in the city of Florence. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Counsel President, roll. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel DePena.
Present.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Present.
Counsel Abdu.
Present.
Counsel Almonte. Counsel Maldonado. Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez. Counsel LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Counselors, can I please get a motion to accept the minutes from March 2nd, 2016, March 15th, 2016, for the regular and executive sessions on April 5th, 2016? Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel DePena.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Almonte noted. Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez. You want Mark to stand or hurry to vote?
Continue to stand there.
Sure. And Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, moving on to public participation.
Counsel President, can I take document number 13314 out of order?
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in...any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. I'd like to invite Corporal Michael Rosa up and, or Marine, or Marine, J.T. Torres. Counsel President, earlier this evening before the meeting started, we had a nice presentation outside where the city of Lawrence flag was brought down by our JROTC from Lawrence High School. And part of this ceremony was to welcome back Corporal Michael A. Rosa, United States Marine Corps, from his time in the Marine Corps, back to Lawrence. What we're going to do right now, Counsel President, is that we are going to have JROTC, who is here, they are going to bring the flag that's been flying in front of their Camp Anonee Common all day. That flag will be given to one of our veterans, J.T. Torres from Lawrence, and J.T. is going to give that flag over to Mr. Rosa. I want to say a few words before we get started on this. Mr. Rosa here has been a resident of Lawrence. He listed in 2011. He served for...he served in overseas as well. He participated in Operation Inherent Resolve. He is a recipient of the Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, the Global War on Terrorism, the Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, the Certificate of Appreciation, the Letter of Appreciation, and the Sharp Shooter Rifle Qualification Badge. So he is a gentleman that served with great distinction in serving our country. And on behalf of all of us, I want to thank him and welcome Mr. Rosa back home to Lawrence.[287.27][287.27](applause) Welcome home there, Marine. And I just want to tell you that you've joined even a bigger, bigger, and larger group of Marines, and now you're amongst brother veterans, and we take care of our own. Welcome home, man. Thank you for your service.[317.33][317.33](applause)
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and it was my honor to serve our country.
Why don't you go around this way and say hi to Mr. Maldonado.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with the agenda. We have public participation. H. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaign promise of safe Florence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera's support of our police department and the Senior Officers Union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been great city because of our hard-working DPW workers, FU workers, and the best leadership of our DPW workers are the best. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW worker in their collective bargaining negotiation. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrifice their safety so our citizen be safe. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh is moving forward. Lawrence Public School now has more higher school graduate, more MCAS improvement, more, more student going to the universities. Our public school is example of the best public school in the nation. We the citizen support our teachers and their hard-working union. Remember your campaign promise of safe Florence, prosperous Florence is only possible you as our elected official support our police department and their union, our firefighters, and our hard-working DPW workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person is Brenda Rossi.
My name is Brenda Rossi, and I live at 127 Chester Street, and I'm president of the South Lawrence West Neighborhood Association. I have to say that after completing four months of this new council, the new leadership is making it easy to sit through a council meeting. The one thing I was wondering about is if there has been a toll booth place between North Lawrence and South Lawrence, as there has not been one single council at large who has attended neighborhood meeting in the south. To date, there's been seven meetings, and not one has made an appearance at any of them. In the past, we could always count on Counsel Tumi to attend the meetings. He would be there whether our council was there or not and fill us in on what was happening in the city if our council could not attend. We now have crickets. He also made every neighborhood association meeting, be it in the north or south. There are four meetings in the south this month: the 9th, 14th, 21st, and 24th, and hopefully we will see one of you there.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell, and I reside 34 Cross Street in the great city of Lawrence. First, ooh, what Brenda said. I would like to add that I've never had to show a passport to cross any of the bridges over the Merrimack from Ciudad Lawrence to Lawrence or from Lawrence to Ciudad Lawrence. Just remember, about a year ago, we had a rewrite of Charles Dickens' Tale of Two Cities by a city councilor in his explanation of why this seminar Hispana Carnival got deposited on the South Common without following proper procedure. Speaking of carnivals, why isn't Section 12.24.010 of the city ordinances followed, and Sections 122401 and 1224020 seem to be contradictory? Speaking of city ordinances, why isn't Section 1.12.010 been updated to reflect the Prince of Darkness, AKA Secretary of State William Galvin's fiat about redistricting the Lawrence voting districts? No voting...the new voting district map, which became effective on December 31st, 2011, describes Galvin as a census liaison. My question is, what takes precedent, city ordinance or Galvin's fiat? By city ordinance, I should be voting in C1. By Galvin's fiat, I vote in District D3. I would like to ask, the council resolved this issue, but it appears that you were so busy that you couldn't make an appearance at last Saturday's Comcast cleanup. Three of you showed, three of you said family or personal issues to deal with, and three of you will probably be seeing your faces on the side of milk cartons asking the question, "Have you seen this person recently?" I filed a public records request involving City of Lawrence, LGH ambulance contract. Bottom line, neither party will pay each other anything as a result of this contract, while LGH shall be permitted to retain all funds collected for this service from various sources. Six or seven years ago, I suffered second-degree burns to my right forearm, the scars of which are there. I was transported by Patriot Ambulance to Holy Family, which is about three miles from my home. My insurance failed to cover the ambulance fee. I had to pay the fee out of my pocket. My three-mile ride with no medical treatment cost almost $1,100. The city's looking to recu...is looking for money to cover the proposed CIP. Here we are leaving money on the table, allowing the rich to get richer.
Again, thank you for the time. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person in line is Dick Blatchford.
Good evening. Dick Blatchford, 3 Harrison Street. We as residents, parents, children, grandparents, students, et cetera, have certain expectations as part of our daily lives. Students, we hope, will do well in school and work to their greatest potential. Firefighters go into burning buildings and hopefully come out alive. Policemen put their lives on the line daily and sometimes pay the ultimate price. Doctors and nurses to do their best to keep us healthy. Parents watch over the...watch over their children to help them grow to be good citizens. Grandparents to help guide their grandchildren to be the best they can. Elected officials to help make the rules that govern us all, and they too also abide by those rules. But in the end, we expect that folks will basically be honest and abide by the rules and be productive citizens. As citizens of Lawrence, why shouldn't we expect those same rules and good behavior to apply always to all elected officials? Do the rules and requirements...and a good example, state election reporting requirements not, not apply to some, but are expected for all others? Maybe, just maybe, if it is too hard to abide by the rules and to be honest...let me repeat that, abide by the rules and to be honest, then perhaps being an elected official is the wrong place for you. I actually had planned to present this at the last city council meeting, but my computer locked up. Sounds like a good excuse, doesn't it? I know it works for others. Thank you, and have a productive evening for all the people of Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Blatchford. Next person is Eric Salatch.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Eric Salatch. I reside at 11 Norris Street in Lawrence, Mass. Here tonight to ask you guys to invoke some of the powers that you have to actually call for an emergency measure to address an issue that was presented the last open meeting on April 19th, I believe it was, regarding a property located at 173 175 Havrell Street. I've got pictures of this building. It's in conditions that are unfit. It's causing a public safety risk to the children, over the 500 children that attend the Frost School on a daily basis, and the 60-plus administrators and teachers at that building. I have checked with the building commissioner. Nothing has been done since this was brought about. Unfortunately, the...one of your colleagues on this council has a 25% ownership stake in that building. It's my concern that there could be some type of manipulation of what should happen appropriately. Now, if this was another building owned by somebody else that was in deplorable conditions, that structurally unsound, the city has the ability to go in and make an emergency order that that building should be torn down. I'm asking you as the council to do this today. This is a public safety concern concerning over 500 students that go from K through 5. This is a significant concern. Somebody should look into this. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Salatch. Next person is Joseph Demora. Good evening.
Thank you, Counsel President, and through you for allowing me the opportunity to address this body. I'm a homeless advocate. I am formerly affiliated with Common Ground Ministries of Havrell. We provide basic needs throughout Merrimack Valley to the homeless community and those that live in extreme poverty. Through several members of your own community, including my friend and advocate, fellow advocate Wayne Hayes, I've become very familiar with the homeless community here in Lawrence. And I wanted to bring your attention to the homeless community that lives specifically under the Central Bridge here in Lawrence as well. What I'm proposing is something that I would hope that you would not only approve, but also could partner with me on. I'd like to do a significant cleanup project of the Central Bridge community. Specifically, this is not a one-day event with photo shoots and people filling up trash bags, but a very serious initiative that also signals a significant change in public policy. When you approach homelessness as a public health issues, a lot of things come into play. I believe that if we make the Central Bridge community space safer environment, it'll be safer for first responders and the police. It will also be safer for volunteers, outreach workers, and social service agencies. The residents currently living there are your residents. They're our residents collectively. They do not live in humane conditions. I believe that crime could also be better controlled if you have better conditions, safer conditions. The area, as you probably know, has also become a very popular area for illegal dumping. So we could perhaps apply some public policy, perhaps some cameras, perhaps some signage to curtail that as well. Overall, if you pursue a plan of improving the public health risks that are vested in that area, I think that that would be helpful. My four phases are very simple. Phase one, I would love it if it was possible for the city to provide us either with a dumpster or several barrels over the next few weeks, along with one or two portlets. And so this way here, we can do an initial cleanup. Phase two, the city can come by and pick up the trash sometime in the next several weeks. Phase three, perhaps the city may consider engaging with a biohazard firm to sanitize certain sections. And phase four, perhaps engage in a policy of maintenance and trash removal on a regular basis. My first phase will initiate in approximately two weeks. We will not announce the date, but I have a nurse and dedicated volunteers. Our first phase is going to be very delicate. We're going to remove the hypodermic needles in the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Demora. And the names will be submitted to the clerk for record-keeping. Moving on in the agenda, public hearings. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice for Document 1816, which is an appropriation transfer from the airport department. Retain earnings accounts to various airport project accounts on the amount of $689,432. It was placed on the agenda by Mr. Miller, airport manager.
Document 118, 2016, notices hereby given to the city council. We'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016, in council chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed appropriation transfer of funds as follows: From Airport Retained Earnings to Runway 523 Safety Area Project, an account to be established in the amount of $538,432. Also, from Airport Retained Earnings, Runway 14...to Runway 1432 Runway Safety Project, a project account established to be funded in the amount of $116,000. Also, from Airport Retained Earnings to Airport Maintenance Garage Replacement Project, an account to be established in the amount of $32,000. And finally, Airport...from Airport Retained Earnings to Runway 5-23 Runway Safety Area Project Account in the amount of $3,000. Total amount of the transfer of Airport Retained Earnings to the above referenced projects is $689,432. Summary was provided and published, and a complete non-bridge copy of all appropriations containing information concerning proposed use of funds to be applied if approved were available for examination in the office of city clerk during business hours 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and posted on the city website under the City Council Public Hearing section. Person wishing to be heard shall be provided the opportunity. This matter was advertised on April 21st.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Counselors, Mike Miller, 90, South Bowden Street, Lawrence, also your airport manager. I rise this evening to ask for your favorable vote on this matter before you. This will allow us to continue to improve the infrastructure of the airport, as well as to bring the airport's grounds and infrastructure into compliance with current FAA design standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
I just have a, um, a question for...
Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Counselor.
Mark. Director Marks, one of the things that I want to make sure I understand is that the $739,000 of the airport's retained earnings, is...was that just for the year that's going to end, or is that cumulative of...
It's cumulative. That was what was certified by the DOR last November.
Okay, because you...all right, because of the bulk of it has been put back into the airport itself to operate.
That is correct, and that's the intent. And I think I may understand where you might be going with this. We'll be adding within the next six months, due to reimbursements from the FAA, that we advanced last year, as well as what we expect to have as a surplus this year. We'll have that balance back up to close to $220,000 by November.
Great, because I thought it was greater, and I guess it's bad.
No, that was it. That's...we've always been looking at these projects coming down the line, and we knew we had to save for them, and that's what the money was there for.
Okay, thank you so much for clearing that up.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselors, are there any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next document is Document 16116, Review of the City of Lawrence Response to Incidents Around the Melrose Street Shooting. Update on Policies and Procedures and Lessons Learned. It was placed on the agenda by myself and Counsel Vice President Mark LaPlante. Counselors, please note that this is a communication from a city official. I'll give the floor to Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Thank you so much for sponsoring this with me. In the light of the events that took place last week on Melrose Street, I think it wasn't...I know that you agree with me. I think it's important for us just to have an overview of what happened during that time, so we can get brief essentially on that situation and learn about what kind of policies and procedures and lessons learned that may have come from that very, very, very unfortunate and tragic situation. So if it's okay with you, Counsel President, I know the mayor is here, along with the police chief, and I've asked if he could be here just to kind of give us an update on, on, on the situation there. So if there's no objection, I'd like to ask the mayor to, to come and...
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Again, councilors, I'd like to remind everyone that this is simply a communication. It's not...we're not making any motions, or we're not taking any decision or policy tonight. It's simply for informational purposes. Thank...good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Thank you, councilors. Counsel President, as you know, about a week ago today, we had a domestic violence incident that with the help from the Lawrence Police Department, the Massachusetts State Police, the Essex County Sheriff's Department, and others, ended with the saving of a mother and a young child. And as I stated on Tuesday, the domestic violence is a problem not only in our community, but in our society. And it's a problem that we need to work on diligently together. When four women a day, on average, are murdered by their spouse or their lover, this is an epidemic. Through media reports and some investigations, we became aware that the shooting victim was granted a restraining order one day prior to this incident, and that the Lawrence Police Department received that restraining order minutes before the incident. This did not afford the Police Department the opportunity to attempt to serve this restraining order. As you remember, last summer, after a domestic violence incident that ended in a murder-suicide, we found that the restraining order process was broken. I directed our Police Department to bring order and accountability to the court's antiquated fax process. We thought we'd fix that problem. This included establishing an email process that ensured every restraining order faxed to the Police Department was emailed instantaneously. The email allowed not only for immediate reception of, of the restraining order, but a record of the receipt and a way to archive it. We could always find that fax. To ensure the more rapid and effective service of restraining order, because receiving a restraining order is only one part of it, actually getting it to the person that's supposed to be restrained is the harder part of it. So to ensure the more rapid and effective service of the restraining orders on the defendants, on the, on the abusers, the chief also assigned one police officer to be the point of contact and to do nothing else but serve the restraining orders. This improved the, the service process. The city server we used for faxes through this process went down, preventing all of the city's faxes from being emailed, and all of them were released on Tuesday, the day of the event, and the police began to serve those, those orders. The process that the court has worked as it should. Our problem is the time that it takes to go through that process. So I met with the administration of the Lawrence District Court, with the police chief, to discuss what happened and to develop a strategy to expedite this delivery of restraining orders. We did that, and there...we're still working on those things. We want to make sure we fix it for good. Simultaneously, we're talking with our IT department to order a new server and create a dedicated fail-safe environment for these communications. It is clear that every moment counts, and so we want to make sure that we don't act in haste. We've got to go through the procurement process. That is not a fast process, so we have to make sure we get quotes and abide by the law. I'm sure that the public is shocked to find out that we are doing this process with faxes and being transmitted in such an imperfect way, such an, such a, such an important document. To reiterate, domestic violence is a serious problem, not only for the city of Lawrence, but nationwide. It is a top priority for us to do everything in our power to keep victims of domestic violence safe and to be sure that justice is served. It is important for anyone in a domestic violence situation to please continue to use the restraining order process. And that means including filling out the restraining order application to its total thoroughness. A restraining order does not give the police officer the right to arrest, but if the abuser is known to have a gun, this, and you write that down in the application, this allows the police immediate authority to remove the weapon from the property, and if that weapon is illegal, to arrest that person for having an illegal weapon. We will work to build higher confidence in this process. Again, we had a tragic domestic violence incident that with the help from the Lawrence Police Department, the Massachusetts State Police, and others, ended with the saving of a young mother the life of a young mother, with a, with a young mother and child. The chief will give you an update on the status of the case.
Good evening, and welcome, Chief Fitzpatrick.
Good evening, Counselors. James Fitzpatrick, Lawrence Police Department Chief. I'm going to give you a synopsis of events that happened on Tuesday, April 26th. At approximately noon, we received reports of a violent domestic dispute, excuse me, dispute on Melrose Street. Early reports indicated that the suspect had access to firearms. Officers began setting up a perimeter around the six-family dwelling. During the process of setting up this perimeter and waiting for other units to arrive, officers observed a male in the third-floor window with a firearm. Officers then reported they heard glass breaking and gunshots. Two officers escorted bystanders in the street to safety, and an officer returned fire on the suspect on the third-floor apartment. Officers continued to set up a perimeter and activated the Lawrence Police Department's emergency response team. Further information provided by witnesses was that there was at least one female victim and a young child potentially still in harm's way. Also, the suspect was also had access to a rifle. These were early reports. Once the emergency team arrived, they began to clear surrounding residents from harm's way. Communication with the suspect had not been successful since the gunfire. Once the area residents had been evacuated, the team began clearing the residence floor by floor, working their way up to the third-floor location of the suspect. Team members encountered a four-year-old child on the second-floor apartment, just below the suspect's location. The child was brought out safely by team members. Also, on the second floor, they observed the child's mother gravely injured. She was also brought out to safety. Once team members approached the third-floor apartment, they observed a, an open door to this apartment. We once again attempted to communicate with the suspect by his cellphone. With the help of the state police, a remote, a remote robot was sent into the apartment. Video captured revealed that the apartment appeared empty, empty, with the exception of a male with a gunshot wound to his head. Team members then made entry into the apartment and confirmed that the male believed to be the suspect was deceased. The processing of this crime scene was turned over to the Massachusetts State Police. All Lawrence Police officers and members of the Massachusetts State Police, K-9 officers from the Essex County Sheriff's Department, and emergency services from Lawrence General Hospital acted in exemplary fashion under difficult conditions and circumstances. The ongoing investigation of this incident is being conducted by members of the Massachusetts State Police, assigned to the Essex County District Attorney's Office. I cannot comment on the ongoing investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Counsel President, that will be withdrawn at this point.
Motion to be withdrawn has been made and properly second.
Withdraw.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chief Fitzpatrick. Moving on with the agenda, committee reports, Document 21615. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor President. Document 216 dot 15 is a handicap parking at 40, 443 and 447 and Dover Street to be deleted, and that came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee, Document 6816.
Document 68 dot 16 is a disabled American veteran request in an hour parking space at 112 A East Haver Street, and that also come out to order a public hearing, and that come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 10316. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
103 dot 16 is a great Lawrence Community Action Council. Request permission to use component common on August 17 from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for their third annual resources fair, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 10416. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 104 dot 16, Counselor, I'm looking for a motion to table this document. I have a conversation with Officer Floriff, who also is present today, and he asked me to table this document, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion to table was made and properly second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 11216. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
112 dot 16 is a livery license that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 11716. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 117 dot 16 is a Lawrence School Department request permission to close the section of Haver Street from the corner of Jackson Street to corner of Lawrence Street, and to use the component common on Lawrence Learn Block Party on Tuesday, August 9, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That also came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 11916. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 119 dot 16 is a transfer rental license is ice cream push car that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 134015. Mr. Chair, from the Housing Committee.
Yeah, the Housing Committee met up on April 25, 2016, and discussed the item 34015 to declare a surplus and disposition of portion of a kiln court, and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 34115. Mr. Chair, from the Housing Committee.
Yes, on this item, we have, I guess, a typo here. We only are going to vote tonight to declare the surplus for this item, and this is a portion of Kirner Street.
Okay.
Only to declare a surplus, not for the disposition. And we met up as well on April 25, and we actually come out with a favorable recommendation for this item. I would like to make that as a formal motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made once again to declare as a surplus only.
As a surplus only, please.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Chair, from the Housing Committee, I have a question in reference to Document 34015. Was your previous motion also to declare a surplus only?
No. The 34015 was to declare a surplus and a disposition.
Okay.
We are, in the Housing Committee, we have two items for these. It's 340A and 340B, and, and actually, we make another, another item, 340C, to actually follow up with the, with the total owner of the property eventually down the road. And that one is to declare a surplus and a disposition, both.
At this point, I'd like to make, to...
Okay, we can make a list of...
Get a confirmatory vote for the disposition as well.
Okay.
From members of the council.
Could you speak up?
I'd like, at this point, I'd like to request that we make a confirmatory vote for the disposition of the property as well. The, the vote that we took included both, but it was not clear in the first motion.
The vote as acceptance?
For Document 34015.
So basically, the 34015, A and B, two separate ones.
Okay, I still have a question of order. Isn't there, wouldn't we have to accept it first, and would the public have to speak on it, on whether we're allowed to accept it?
At this point, we're simply declaring it as a surplus, so it's not a public hearing for the... Mr. Vice President?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's my understanding, in the way that we conducted business, even during the orientation, there was a question that came up, as you recall, and during that time, we were reminded that we do not need a public hearing on the disposition, we do not need a public hearing on the surplus, and I would just, I would just request that, in the motion that the chairman is making, that he lists the, the party who is getting the, the disposition, and also the amount written to the record.
Yes, the applicant's name is James Boychanel, and he's here tonight, and I don't know if he's willing to speak. The property is about 1,780 square feet, and the, the sale price for this is $1,780, which has been done by a, by a yard sale, with the yard sale program that we have in the city.
Okay.
The merch property is around there. It's a map, 110 lot 22, 23, and 228.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you, Mr.
And the only use that they're going to be using this for is for parking lot spaces.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Chair, from the Housing Committee. Counselors, at this point, I'd like to request a...
I just wanted to thank the Vice President and the Chair for providing more information about the document.
Definitely.
And yes, I know about declaring surplus. I was way ahead of you guys. I was at 138, so...
Wonderful.
The next one.
I'd like for us to take a, a vote for the disposition at this point.
Yeah, we'd like to make a motion to follow this position.
Second.
And, Counsel President, I would just make a request as well, through the advice of the clerk, I know that the chairman wants to send this back to make sure there's a condition, to make sure those conditions are fulfilled within 90 days, and so the clerk was explaining to both of us, I think, earlier, that, that after we have this vote, that it goes back down to the housing, so that we can make sure that the conditions are met within the timeframe that it was agreed upon.
Definitely. Mr. Chair, from the Housing Committee, do you accept that as a amendment?
Yes, definitely, yes. We actually spoke with the owner and, and talked about the procedures, how we're going to, how we would like to see this property to be in the future, and they definitely agree upon, and, and we would love to have that item in the, in the housing, the 34015.
Thank you, Counselor Rodriguez. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. All those in favor, at this point, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 13816. Mr. Chair, from the Housing Committee.
Yes, as well, the, on April 25, on April 25, 2016, the Housing Committee met and accepted this document with a favorable recommendation, and this is 13816, the settlement of the dip of Faro site, the Speaker River and the Merama River, parcel 661 and 666, and portion, portion of the parcel 662 and 8517. We discussed the topic, and, and we sent it over to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and we would like to have that as a formal motion with discussion.
A motion has been made. Is there second?
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Rodriguez, followed by Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez and Counselor Mark LaPlante.
I would like to give the floor to Vice President LaPlante.
Vice President LaPlante?
Thank you. Thank you. All right. One of the things that we talked about in, in the Housing Committee, Mr. President, was that the question was, how much money was being paid in taxes for that parcel before it was sold over to Groundworks Lawrence, and we were told that that information would be provided tonight, and I'm looking to see if we were going to get that information tonight.
Nobody's here.
And, and that was part of the conditions, as you can see on your, the information that you have before us, with the conditions requested by me, of how much taxes, that was one of the conditions on there. I, I would certainly, I'll be willing to listen to comments from my colleagues, but I, I am expecting to make a motion to table this matter until we get that information.
I'm, I'm, I'm watching for this.
Well, I, I just, I don't want to present that yet, because I know other colleagues may want to...
No, I agree.
Okay, so, is there a motion to table at this point?
Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made and properly second, or for the discussion. All those in favor to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, motion passed. Next document is Document 10516. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor President. Document 105 dot 16 is a national gree request permission to place underground electric conduct on South Union Street. That came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 10716. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 107 dot 16 is also from national gree request permission to place underground electric conduct on Exis Street, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 10816. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 108 dot 16 is a junk dealer license of 48-50 Met Force Street. That come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next document is Document 13016. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 130 dot 16 is a small sale communication equipment petition of the City Council for pool attachment, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and...
Second.
And properly second. Discussion, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the, the people from Verizon, because we asked them information on the, you know, radiation frequency, and how it would affect people in the community, and they provided us with a study that even addresses Lawrence specifically, so, on page five of it, even though most of you probably haven't had a chance to look at it. But we also have a lot of constituents that are concerned about that, and we need to be able to speak to that if they should ask. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 13116. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 131 dot 16 is a transfer rental license. It's one of the push ice cream car, and that come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 13416. Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Document 134 dot 16 is a law to a community coalition request permission to hold the 2016 National Night Out, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick discussion now.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
A quick question. Do we remember, this, this year's supposed to be a, like a, a... This year's supposed to be sort of different than the other years, and Harold McGurk told us?
Basically, what he was saying is that he was trying to engage the bodega and all the store to participate in this event. That was basically the only, the only new information that he has.
Is he here? Yeah. Can you come forward? Through you, Counsel President? Is he here? Yeah. Can you come forward, through you, Counsel President? I mean, can he?
Sure.
Forward for a second?
Mr. McGoon?
I thought that it was special for a certain reason. This year versus, I mean, every time it's good.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Counselors. Harold McGoon, Director of Lawrence Mathoin Community Coalition, four thirty North Canal Street. We're trying to get, we're here earlier this year, 'cause we wanna try to promote this more widely, and there are different strategies that we're trying to employ through media, social media, and also through the small businesses, through the different bodegas, through the school department. So there's a lot more of, a larger, wider audience to try to get more participation from, from the residents in the city.
And what year is this for?
Twenty-fourth year.
How long have you got?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four?
Yes.
So maybe next year, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, right.
To be the more celebratory one?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, but I hope people get out this, this time, this year too. Thank you.
Counselors, are there any further questions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGoon. Next item is document one thirty-six sixteen. Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Document one thirty-six dash sixteen is request for approval of temporary no parking area section of North Parish Road. That is for the high school graduation, and that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document one thirty-seven sixteen. Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Document one thirty-seven dash sixteen is a day remembers a murder victim organization request permission to use common common on September twenty-four from ten thirty a.m. to five thirty p.m. And that also come out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez?
Counsel President, I'm sorry, I see that, that she's up in the podium, and I thought, can she just say a few words about it, and maybe get more people to show up?
Hi, um, the event starts at one o'clock. I know we had to change it a little bit, 'cause it, of the balloons that we did last year, we put them in the ground, so it takes some time. Thank you to everybody who were attended for the past two years. I hope you'll attend this year. It's a beautiful event, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to withdrawals items. Document three fourteen B oh five. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Yes, we would like to withdraw the, the item, the document three fourteen B, which was done in two of, in, in two thousand and five. And this property basically was sold to Maria Garcia's back then, in two thousand and five. And that, that, basically, we have conditions that they met already, and we keep one item, this item on the Housing Committee, and that way we can follow up and make the buyer accountable for their, for the purchase. And, and these, Maria Garcia back then, in two thousand and five, she bought this property and successfully met the conditions, and we would like to withdraw the item from the Housing Committee, and from the entire agenda.
Okay, is that in a formal motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
And it's been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document three oh two B oh eight. Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee.
Uh, the same situation, Raphael Garcia's back, back then, in two thousand and eight, purchased the property in seventy-four Springfield Street, and they met the conditions that was put down by the department, by the city. And, and this is, this is something that we would like to see, and they come up to the, during the, during the April twenty-fifth meeting, and we would like to withdraw the item from the agenda, because they met the conditions.
Okay. Second, the motion.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counselors. Counselors, are there any table matters that you would like to take off the table at this moment?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to take document one thirteen sixteen out of all business.
Second.
Motion has been made for one thirteen sixteen, and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 But that, that was the proper order.
Mr. President, the last meeting, Powers and Sullivan's were supposed to make a presentation on the audit, and for some reason, nothing happened. Can somebody explain what happened, and why Powers and Sullivan did not make the presentation to the full council?
Sure. From my recollection, if I am not mistaken, we accepted this document as a committee report, and no further action or no discussion was engaged by any of the counselors present during that meeting. That's my recollection on the, on the matter.
Um, I would like to, to invite, that we send a letter to Powers and Sullivan to come in front of the council, so we can listen, those of us who were not present at the subcommittee level. I would like to hear their presentation and ask questions.
Okay. Is that in formal motion?
I would like to make the motion, yes, that we invite them to make a presentation.
Second.
The motion has been made, and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I just have a question. When did you expect to have that invitation?
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to make the motion to table the, this document again.
Second.
Motion has been made to table document one thirteen sixteen, and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselors, can, is there any table matters that you would like to take off the table?
Is there none, Counsel President? I'd like to take, ask in emergency, the, the item that Mr. Slack was talking about on the, yeah, and so that the Housing Committee can look at it sooner rather than later. And if it's, if it's right to do so, to declare it, both of these buildings public nuisance.
So at this point, you're, you're suspending rules to add a new
Yes.
item, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Second, the motion.
Thank you.
A motion has been made, and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Can, you'll say? Counsel Abdu? Can you just repeat what the motion is? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Mr. Clerk?
Excuse me, the motion is to suspend the rules by Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez to add a new item concerning one seventy-three, one seventy-five, Haverhill Street regarding, called safety concerns, and for the matter to be added to the council agenda at this point. I don't believe I heard a second, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstains?
Abstain.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
For those keeping score, this will be document one six, one sixty-two of sixty. Counsel Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Monte, noted. Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel DePena?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
Abstain.
Abstain, noted. And Counsel President?
Yes.
Seven, one abstention.
What's the item number?
One sixty-two sixteen.
So does that automatically become a new document, or do you need another?
I'd like to refer this document to the Housing Subcommittee.
Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion that, to try to expedite matters, that we invite the building commissioner to that particular meeting with a report, since it is of a, a time urgency, to give a report as to his findings on that property, so that we can be more educated, rather than having the meeting, and asking him to give us a report, and then delaying things off. So that's the motion that I'm making.
Great idea. Second.
A motion has been made, and properly second. Any further discussion?
Yes, just a
Counselor Maldonado?
Just a question for the gentleman, if, through you, if you allow me. Do you, do you have any documentation that you can provide in the subcommittee? Any items, specifics?
As to what, specifically?
Specific as to the, the
Actual conditions of the building?
Yes.
I can request that the fire department, who was there on scene on April fifteenth, who placed the, those significant red flags, so the fire department would not go in to be injured, based on the structural integrity of the building. I, I contacted the fire department. As to my knowledge, there hasn't been an, an official report of that. I'm sure you folks on the committee could probably get that a little bit sooner than I could.
Okay.
And I did speak with Chief Moriarty's office. He made the implication that the, the condition of the building was red flagged, so firefighters wouldn't go in and get injured. Other than that, I know no idea of any specific documentation.
Mr. Plante, will you accept an amendment to your motion, to, to invite the, also the fire department to submit their report?
Sure, if, if the amendment is for the fire chief to provide any information regarding that building, to us to make a more informed decision on declaring it a nuisance, then I accept that amendment.
Okay, thank you.
And just to correct the record, I think before, when I was speaking in the general session, I called it the Frost School, which my wife would probably be quite mad at, and she
Yes.
reminded me that it's
And I said, I was the Frost School in Haverhill.
Yeah, no, it was a mistake. I, the, the plaque on the building does say, the historic, the front building is a historical building because of Robert Frost, but
A motion has been made. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors?
Wow, there are a lot of table items.
Yes. Counselors, there's a, an item on table matters, which is document three fourteen fifteen, Water and Sewer Department Rules and Regulations Amendments, and it was placed on the agenda by Brian Pena, Water and Sewer Commissioner. Can I please get a motion to take it off?
Sir move.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Can I please get a motion to order a public hearing for this document?
Sir move.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes, could we make sure, um, could you make sure, maybe the clerk or someone will provide us with the latest?
We did, we, we got it connected.
Okay, the most recent, yeah, okay.
So, um, this has, this had been table previously, because there was some information that was pending. The clerk has received the information, and it's ready to post for the public hearing.
No, he was gonna make some changes.
He'll be sharing that information with all of us. Any further discussion?
Through you, Counsel President.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Can we get that information ASAP, please?
Yes, the clerk will be providing that to all of us.
Yeah, I mean, the entire, the entire island information, all the stuff, everything.
I can send the entire document to all of you tomorrow, if you'd like.
No more questions.
Okay. All those in favor to order a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor, any other table matters? Seeing there's none, moving on to new business. Document one forty-five.
Counsel President, I'm sorry, I'd like to withdraw document, excuse me, number two seventy-eight twelve, the tax credit for senior volunteers, only because it's been now implemented, and there's no need for us to have it on the council agenda anymore.
Okay. Motion to take it off the table, Counsel, by Counsel Vice President?
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Vice President LaPlante, seconded by Counsel Reyes, to take off the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any further items? Seeing there's none, moving on to new business. Document one forty-five sixteen, Iglesia Monte de Oración, request permission to use the Crown and Park on June eighteen, William Kennedy Park on July ninth, Estoril Park on August twentieth, and Bourbon Park on September third. This is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document one forty-six sixteen, Lawrence Family Development Charter School, request to install rubberized speed bombs for each of their campuses at thirty-five, thirty-four West Street, Bradford Street, West Street, and May Street, going to the Ordinance Committee. One forty-seven sixteen, transfer vendor license, going to the Ordinance Committee. One forty-eight sixteen, handicap parking, going to the Ordinance Committee. One forty-nine sixteen, transfer vendor license, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document one fifty sixteen, transfer vendor license, going to the Ordinance Committee. Document one fifty-one sixteen, Desfile Dominicana, request permission for the closing of Mills Street, Methuen Street, on Sunday, June twelve, two thousand and sixteen, from three p.m. to eleven p.m. For the Dominican night, is going to the, uh, Ordinance Committee. Document one fifty-two sixteen, Desfile Dominicana, request permission to use the Campagnon Common Stadium on August fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, from three through eleven p.m. for a parade, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document one fifty-three sixteen, Water and Sewer Department, Extension of Water Treatment Facility Operation and Maintenance Contract, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one fifty-four sixteen, Water and Sewer Department, forty thousand dollar, forty thousand dollars grant award for fiscal sustainability plan, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one fifty-five sixteen, Communities Together Incorporated, permission to use the Campagnon Common near the flag display on May fifth, two thousand and sixteen, to celebrate a National Day of Prayers. Counselors, can I please get, get a motion to take this item as an emergency?
Sir moved. Second.
What item?
It's document one fifty-five sixteen. Motion has been made, and properly second. Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
I would just note that we received a communication today collectively from the mayor's office, specifically the Chief of Staff, who informed us what is obvious, and that is that this date is three days away. Therefore, any action, any routine action this council would take would, would be too late. So a request has been made to make this an emergency item, so that it can be acted upon and executed this evening. And I suppose that would, that would require us to approve with waiving of the thirty days, correct?
Correct. So, Counselors, any further discussion? So, the motion at this moment is to declare as an emergency. So that, that's the first motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Counselors, can I get a motion to approve waiving the thirty days?
Second.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second. All those in favor, please
Quick, quick, quick discussion on this. There is some angst among some of the folks that we represent regarding the emergency nature of these things. And it's important that the folks, this is a very good cause, but it's really important that, that individuals, Counsel President, who want to reserve and use the common, have a little forethought, a little more time, rather than, and making us scurry around, trying to make things happen in a very short notice. It really kinda closes the process up a little bit, and it jams us. And it would be really helpful, and we're, I think this body's very accommodating when it comes to requests. I don't know of too many requests that we've said no to. So it's incumbent upon the individuals who are, are leaders and organizers on the various things, to please, please, get their things in a timely manner, so we don't have to do these kinds of emergency matters to make sure they, they work. I just, I think that's important to note.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So a motion has been made, and properly second. Any further discussion? There's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document on the agenda is document one fifty-six sixteen, Community Health Worker Reclassification, is going to the Personnel Subcommittee. Document one fifty-seven sixteen, Financial Review for Quarter Ending March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one fifty-eight sixteen, Additional Two Thousand Seventeen Home Grant on the Amount of Three Thousand Forty Nine Dollars, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document one fifty-nine sixteen, St. Mary of the Assumption Parish, Request Permission to Collect Money in the Streets to Help Earthquake Victims in Ecuador Collection Locations, Jackson Street and Haverhill Street, Excess Street and Broadway, Park Street and Lawrence, South Union and Andover Streets, East Haverhill and Berkeley, on Saturday, May fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Counselors, this is a similar situation to the Councillors, this is a similar situation to the prior item. Can I please get a motion to take it as an emergency?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councillors, can I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
I'd like to have a discussion. Motion has been made and properly second. Mister Clerk, for this particular document, when I was reviewing the package, I know that it does not have, or at least the information that I received, it does not have the sign off, oh, the sign off sheet? It does not. All it has is a letter requesting the permission.
Yes, you're correct, Council President. That was, I got a call from the administrator of the police department in that regard on two issues, concerning a public safety matter of placing people in traffic, concerning such a petition, and the second one was the sign off. There was no suggesting that the police department was either in opposition, but just wanted to be sure that the public safety issues were addressed. In the past, the council has approved such items with a proviso that participants not be meddling out into the lane of traffic as a condition, and secondly, that such items without a sign off sheet, I know it is circulating, I signed it, may be allowed if the council is considering it pending submission of proper paperwork reviewed by the clerk.
Councillors, with that information provided, the reason I requested this to be taken as an emergency, once again, is the time sensitivity. It's for May 14, and so at this point, it's your decision why you would like to do with the item.
Well, it's 30%. Is the signing sheet, it's around?
It's going around.
It's going.
Oh, it's going to be.
So currently, the petitioners, so let's take into consideration the fact that this is for the earthquake that happened in the country of Ecuador.
Yeah, it gotta be an emergency.
It was unplanned, an unplanned event. I do support the event simply because it was something unplanned, no prior preparation was required, you know, presented by the petitioners, and they are trying to take the proper steps to ensure that we do it.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna, I just wanna let everybody know that this past Sunday morning, throughout the whole day, there were people collecting money with no permission. Now, at least, we have the church requesting permission to do the same thing, and essentially, it's something that happened in Ecuador, and it can happen everywhere, and we gotta, I think that we should act as an emergency, and just avoid any other delays that we have, that we might have.
Counselor Fales. Thank you, Counselor Fales.
Thank you, Council President. I'll make sure that later this is the one that has emergency, they're coming, just to kind of, maybe she'd sign off, so that way, if we approve it tonight, we can, this is off, we can.
Got a date? Got a date?
Let me just repeat it. I'll make sure that if we pass this tonight, I make the phone call tomorrow to make sure that the sign off sheet is gonna be ready, so before that event. So if you are okay with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So the motion?
Is to approve pending the documentation, and I'll make sure that they sign, I mean, they get the sheet, sign off.
And who's this?
Thank you, Council Reyes. So the motion was pending documentation by the petitioners.
And who's the petitioner?
The petitioner is the Saint Mary of the Assumption Parish.
Oh, okay.
And the spokesperson for them is Paula Itriago.
Itriago, yep.
Okay. Councillors, any further discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor Vice President?
And the last thing, just to piggyback on my earlier comments, if we're gonna go ahead and do this, the applicant should at least be here to show at least something that they're answer questions on this matter and the previous matter. I don't think we, anybody here for that, it's the least they can do to try to, as we're trying to do what we can to try to accommodate, they should at least be here and show some interest in advocating for this, so we can ask questions like what we just did.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mister Vice President.
Just add, you know, I understand and I agree with you, but I don't think they were, or none was aware of that we're gonna be taking care of this as an emergency this evening. But I mean, you know, I'm on your side, you know, if it's something like, if we're gonna be taking or treating it as an emergency, they need to be here, but this is something that I'm sure they were not aware of.
Discussion?
Council Alvarez Rodriguez?
Yes, and we have made it important for people to show up at the full council meetings when we send their item up, and sometimes we've told them, if it's a little iffy, it's just about ordering a public hearing, we then tell them when, that we will contact them to come in, but for items like this, I don't see why there's no one here for it.
Councillors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 160-16, Transfer Vendor License is going to the Ordinance Committee. And Councillors, I have one more item that needs to be taken as an emergency. This was a document submitted by the Mayor McValley Project for a June 5 event, immigrant blessing interfaith at the Campagnon Common from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Can I please get a motion to take it as an emergency to add to the agenda? Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? Counselor Abdu, Councilal Alvarez Rodriguez?
Mister President, is this Document 161-16?
Mister Clerk?
I ran out of 161.
I think my staff may have already assigned a number to it, because it's showing that there is a sign off sheet, so I would beg your indulgence, I'll get you the document number first thing in the morning. It may already have a document number, I'm not sure.
Thank you, I'm just trying to keep track. Keeping score.
Yes, that was, all I needed clarity was, this is just to, I knew items to go to committee.
So this one, once we, if we do approve it as an emergency, I will assign it to the Ordinance Committee.
Okay.
Okay. Councillors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mister Clerk, I'd like to assign this document, the ayes have it. Mister Clerk, I'd like to assign this document to the Ordinance Subcommittee. Mister Chair, from the Housing Committee, when is your next meeting?
Can you say the time?
Madam Chair, from the Ordinance Committee.
Thursday, the 12th.
Mister Vice President, Chair from the Budget and Finance Committee.
The 11th. I'm wondering if we can move the Housing, the Budget Committee for the 9th, and then traditional night to try to accommodate the member schedule on the Housing Committee. Can we do that?
The 9th is Monday, right?
The 9th, for those who are in the budget, I don't want to.
Personnel, you mean.
No. Is there a personnel meeting on the 9th?
Monday night's a traditional night for personnel, 7 o'clock.
Is there a personnel meeting?
There's a personal item, there's one that we referred. Most likely, it won't take a long time.
My suggestion, Mister President, that we do personnel at 6 o'clock, then they can proceed at 6:30 or?
7.
7.
Budget, 7.
Okay, so.
So if it's all right, let's, and I want to get the council chairman for the Housing Committee, if we can have the Budget Committee on the 9th, and then Housing on the 11th?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, clarification, Housing will be on the 11th.
7 o'clock.
Budget and Finance on the 9th, and we will need to clarify with the chairwoman from Personnel for the Personnel Subcommittee.
Is there a vice chair for?
Mister Counselor Abdu.
Counselor?
For the 9th.
I'm fine with the 9th.
6:00 p.m.
Yes, because you have, you now have something at 7, correct?
Yes. So Personnel, 6:00 p.m. on the 9th.
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, so those are the next committee meetings. Councillors, any, can I please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.